Good evening and welcome to our first hearing. This council has called. It's in the form of a special meeting of council. I would like, just to give you some preliminary remarks. I want to approve the agenda after a motion from the council members and a vote. And then I want to give some introductory remarks about how this hearing may run so we'll be able to do it effectively and giving an opportunity to everybody to speak who wants to speak and also give an opportunity to the council members to ask questions to the people who actually are stepping forward to give their opinion about the issues that we have. So having said that, I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
I make the motion to approve the agenda.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we have an agenda approved, then we proceed. We have two matters to deal today in that special meeting, which is a hearing. We have a public hearing on the proposed local government reform by the province of New Brunswick and a public hearing on making an application to the ACOA for the Canada Community Revitalization Fund, an application for a Magadevic place expansion that will include a library and an indoor walking track. I want to ask how many individuals in this hearing are here to speak to the first item? Anyone here has come to actually speak about the government restructuring of municipalities?
I'd like to hear what it's all about before we answer on who should be speaking. So someone can explain what that's all about?
It is a public hearing on the proposed local government reform by the province of New Brunswick. So we call this part of the hearing to ask our residents and our actually our residents who live outside the town to actually bring forward their opinions, concerns, suggestions about what we should communicate to the government. Because right now we are in the process of consultation and now is the time to actually put forward what we are concerned or what we wish to see in this plan. So it's, I think it's self-evident.
Can you explain to us what the proposal's voting number reform with the province of Brunswick entails?
No, this is not, this is not a meeting for the council to explain. This was a meeting that we called to ask if the public wishes to have some input to the consultation that the government of New Brunswick has asked the municipalities to participate. Just for a background, other cities and other municipalities have done so already and they have submitted their position on the proposed restructuring to the government. So that's why we have this hearing. If there is anyone who wants to speak on that matter, now is the time to say, I have a concern about that or I have this input or this suggestion. Anyone from the council wish to put any input to that? Well, we, oh, go ahead, yes, please.
I guess, I'm just wondering if, or my question would be, have you had consultation already with the LST chairs?
Yes, we did.
Okay. So, county mayor and council have all met with the LST chairs who put together?
No, the mayor and our CAO met with two LSDs. The LSD from Buck Bay chose not to participate. We have a meeting and we asked them, we informed them that we plan to hold this hearing. We heard some of the concerns that they have and they told us that they intend to come and present it to our council. And from what I see, they chose not to come.
Well, but, so, they have a meeting this evening already. The LST chairs have a meeting already this evening. That was long scheduled before last week when you proposed to have a special meeting this evening. So I guess I'm just asking if the, when you're asking for the public to share, but if our LST chairs and our LST executives are already meeting on this, we, I mean, I guess we can't speak for everyone, but I would assume that my LST chair is meeting on behalf of me in my LSD, as would most LSD residents.
Thank you.
So I'm asking as an LSD resident if the mayor and council has all met with and consulted with my LSD chair. And so when you said you've met with two, but there are many LSDs. So there's the LSD of St. George and then there's the LSD of Penfield, the LSD of La Pro in Clarendon, and then Beaver Harbor, West River Town, sorry, but, and then Funday Bay. So, and you can see Patrick, I believe, is still in our zone. So have those all been consulted and this is a hearing to ask us what we, I guess, I'm just wondering?
Jason, do you want to actually tackle this question, please?
So the purpose of the hearing tonight is just to hear input from any residents of St. George on the local government reform. So we really don't know as far as, you know, what the background on local government reform is. We've had a green paper that's come out. We're waiting for a white paper that will give a little more direction, a little more clarity in what the reform looks like. So right now is the time of, I guess, expressing if you have any concerns over local government, what you'd like to see in a local government reform. So as of right now, any of the consultation or discussions have had been done with a couple LSDs, but yes, you're right, each LSD resident should be going to their LSD.
The process, that's my question. The process is, as an LSD resident, I should be going to my LSD chair?
Definitely, yep.
To have that conversation?
Yes.
And I'm assuming by the process that that LSD chairs are the ones that are meeting with the area?
Yeah, that still hasn't been, you know, finished yet, so that consultation's still ongoing. But tonight here is for St. George residents, just like the LSD residents would be going to their group. It's a chance for the St. George residents to come and to sort of ask questions on the matter of local government reform. So certainly they, you know, a couple of them were invited tonight. I think there is, you know, at least one representative from the LSD of Penfield that just came today to listen in, but it's more or less just, you know, a time to...
For the, so, and that's what I guess I was understanding. So more for the residents of St. George and not for the LSD?
That's right, I mean, certainly, value...
Would you not set up restrictions as to whether or not a person, whether or not is part of the LSD or a resident who lives like outside the town can come? This is an open, public meeting about the subject. We made an effort to contact leaders of some LSD communities, the biggest at least. We contacted Penfield and we contacted the one in Buck Bay and they chose not to come.
The biggest would actually be the LSD of St. George?
Yeah, let me finish. And at this stage, what we hope is to actually hear from as many people as possible. So if you want to speak about your concerns, about your LSDs, to communicate it to this council, we know that you are just a resident of that LSD, but you still have a standing in this hearing as a resident outside of our town. So I think with that, without beating that subject more, I would like to ask, is there any person from an LSD who wants to speak? You mentioned about the Penfield...
I just want to add then to the minutes or whatever that my only concern as an LSD resident would be that the mayor and council is not speaking with the chair, my LSD chair, because has not yet won any government reform and I would say...
Thank you.
Thanks.
Just for some processing here too, if people can, you know, certainly use the microphone. We do have some people in the back that are hard of hearing that may have some difficulty hearing and certainly they can come up and use the...
Excellent suggestion. So I would ask every person who likes to present to actually stand by that microphone and make the presentation. We as a town asked our CAO to prepare some remarks about what the town sees as issues that we feel we should put forward in this consultation. And then if any other member of St. George, resident of St. George, or from the LSDs wish to add, we'll be able to entertain it. The general format that we will follow would be the one that a person is going to speak his presentation and then we will allow some questions from the council if council has any questions. So without further ado, I will ask the first person who wants to speak, is Jason or is going to be from the LSD, what do you prefer? You can go first? I'm sorry, can you?
My concern...
No, no, can you please identify yourself? I cannot...
David Hooper, St. George resident, former councillor. My concern would be government reform. We went through that a while ago with LSDs, or not LSDs, regional service commissions. And I sat in on all those meetings and all it was, was a hope and a prayer that they would reduce costs, which they actually drove costs up. Sirs, no, as far as I can see, no purpose of regional service commissions. And I'm afraid that the government will end up with the same mixed bag again of more overhead, more taxes, just more paperwork. They will not actually reform anything. You know, that's where we ended up with regional service commissions. They had no idea what they were forming when they did it. I sat into the first meeting in Oak Bay with the minister and they said, we hope, we wish, we think we might, you know, reduce expenses. But it didn't work out that way. And I just figured that this will be another trip down that road, that you really won't see reform that's meaningful. You know, you cannot keep adding layers of expenses onto your local residents. We're not a high wage area, you know, you have to live, they have to live within their means, especially seniors. We have a high percentage of seniors. They're all on fixed income. You can't raise taxes to cover more government. And that's, that's my concern.
Thank you, David. I just want to pick up on the point of the concerns about the additional, I guess David left, but I would have liked to ask him a question about that, but anyways. Thank you, David. Any other, any other one had a question to ask David, I can get him back? No? Do you have any other person from the LSD who wants, you mentioned somewhere who wants to speak?
I see, no.
No? Okay. So I will ask Jason to actually present the position of the town about the incoming, I guess, restructuring and what you think we should be putting forward as consultation to the ministry.
Thank you, worship. So just in, just regards to the town, some views of the town of St. George, you know, there's four points that just to raise in regards to local government reform. One is the timing of the reform. Certainly we're going through a COVID pandemic. It's a very difficult time. We just came out of a municipal election as well, so getting not only members of council but residents up to, up to, up to speed on this, this topic is certainly important. People are both mentally and financially stressed at this time period, so it's certainly difficult even getting people to come out to meetings like this. They expressed concerns over, over the pandemic. You know, people are living in the LSD due to affordability and limited government regulations, so I think that's certainly something to express as well here tonight. I know that was raised with someone at the door earlier of why they live in an LSD. So that's sort of one point would be, would certainly be the timing of this reform. Another thing for the town of St. George is the sprawl of businesses at the edge of town. Recently we had a business that left the town, you know, primarily lack of due to develop it, developable land in St. George. We have a lot of areas that are very difficult to get to, that are sort of at the very edges, large tracts of land, unfortunately, that are just not accessible. So anytime we have businesses that move, you know, or close up shop or convert, you know, maybe a business parcel to a residential parcel, rezone out, there's certainly a loss of potential tax revenue for the town as well. We see a lot of developing on the outside of town. In the past, we've approached the province on looking at possible annexation. At that time, 20, early 2018, 2019, it was viewed that, you know, local, local government reform was coming, so best sort of wait and see how that pans out. Certainly in regards to outside of the town and the buildup that's happened outside the town boundaries, you know, there's certainly, we do have environmental and health concerns as more and more businesses take on, you know, the water, well water and introduction of more septic fields. That could be a concern, you know, not only just for the residents of the town, but for the residents of the nearby area. Certainly that's within the mandate of the province to ensure that, you know, wells and septic fields are properly installed. However, it's going to continue to put more strain on certainly the, the water table in that area. The third would be just the ability to opt out of programming with the regional service commission, something that was highlighted by the city of Fredericton, the ability for municipalities to, to be independent and self-govern. So instead, you know, we don't, again, we really don't know if this is even going to be part of the white paper, but, you know, just advising the province that we certainly would like to maintain the ability to opt out of regional service commission services, whether that's building and planning, you know, maybe it's tourism that's, that's to come, I guess, anything, just to sort of maintain the independent, self-governing entity of a municipality, town of St. George. And then the fourth is, is in regards to identity. You know, we were encouraged by the fact that the province appears to recognize and respect the independent identities of various municipalities. And certainly here in St. George, you know, the St. George parish, which does include the, the LSD of Funday Bay and the LSD of St. George, that parish has been around since the mid 1800s. It's part of our, our identity. People here in the St. George parish certainly relate closely with this area, closer than maybe somebody in the LSD of La Pro or the LSD of even Beaver Harbor. So there is some very strong identity within St. George and the surrounding areas. So we'd certainly want to think to approach the province on is to sort of maintaining that identity and the ability for, you know, people in this area to sort of work together. So that's sort of really the four points that we've, we've looked at. And again, we don't know with the province what the white, what's entailed in the white paper. This is just sort of a time right now to sort of reflect on, you know, what we'd like to see. There's many different stories on what the local government will look like in the future and whether it will happen at all. So really it's, it's, we're still at that early stage, but certainly the province is looking for feedback and suggestions on this matter. So that's really all the points that I have, your worship. I'm not sure if any other members of council want to add anything more?
Just to summarize, Jason, because I want to be clear. With regards to the business sprawl at the end, the edge of the town, is that something new or is something that you want to put into the restructuring consultation, is something that the town is, has already made steps?
We, we've attempted to make steps in the past. In 2018, 2019, we approached local government, the province, department, department of local government and just to sort of start, start that process and see what it would look like. At that time, you know, they basically came back and said that, you know, there is a local government reform that's coming and it's for us to sort of wait and see how that pans out. So there wasn't really much of an appetite at that time. So yeah, so it has been looked at in the past, just as recent, the last few years, but previous to that, I'm unaware of any, I'm not aware of any type of attempt to, to sort of move the boundaries in that direction.
Just because we are in a public meeting and the town just communicated this and we had the opportunity of a hearing, does any member of the public has any input, comment, feedback that they may want to actually put to what the CAO has proposed? Any members of the council? Oh, I have a question. Adrian.
I just, I just wanted to, to answer a question that I heard at the beginning of the evening because the question was asked, what is, what is local governance reform? So I'm, I'm not going to attempt to give you a fulsome description of what local government's reform is simply because it's incredibly complicated. There are so many issues out there and, you know, for every person, everybody has a little bit of something that is important to them that, that might be a little bit different from the person beside them. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to direct you to the green paper, which can be found online, and it gives a summary of what it is that the government is, is interested in having as a discussion. You know, I have found since I was elected that most people don't actually understand how New Brunswick is divided up. And I would ask that question, does anybody know how many RSCs we actually have in the province of New Brunswick? Do you know what RSC you belong to? I don't see everybody jumping up and raising their hands. And actually, I think my husband and I had this conversation tonight and he said, I don't really know what an RSC is. It's a regional service commission. And so our province is divided up into 12 regional service commissions and you might say, well, how is it that our regional service, how did I get into the regional service commission that I'm in? We're actually in RSC 10. How did I belong, how do I belong to RSC 10? The way RSCs were originally set up was based on where your garbage went. It's actually based on where your landfill is. So it's not based on identity, it's not based on any other reason. The way the RSCs were created was based on where your garbage goes. And I hardly think that that seems like a rational way of setting up government based on where your garbage goes. And I would say that the government agrees and says, okay, we have to do things a little bit different. So just, just for a little bit of information, so in, you know, in the province of New Brunswick, there are 340 local entities, there are eight cities, there are 26 towns, there are 61 villages, there are eight rural communities, one regional municipality, and 236 local service districts. Do we have people here tonight who live in a local service district? If you live in an LSD, raise your hand. Excellent. Do you, if you know the name of your LSD, raise your hand. If you don't know the name of your LSD, raise your hand. Because I found that there's a lot of people who don't know where they actually live, what their governing body is. Little bit more information, 37% of the population in New Brunswick actually lives in a city. 30% of our population lives in a local service district. 17% of our population lives in a town. 30% of our LSDs are actually unrepresented, which means that they have no chair whatsoever. Here in our area, an example of an LSD that is not represented is Beaver Harbor. They have no organized LSD. Since I've been elected, I've gotten all kinds of questions and they relate to local governments reform, whether people realize it or not. A big question that I get, and this is for the LSD people out there, not for the town people, because I don't get a lot of conversations from town people about municipal reform because of what you see right here in front of us. They have people that they have elected, they have people that they trust, who are making decisions for them. For people who live in LSDs, they don't have that same luxury. And so I get a lot of calls because I'm perceived as the representative of the LSDs. So some of the calls that I receive are this. How did my LSD chair get in place? How often does my LSD actually have to meet? Does it need to be a public meeting? Do the meetings have to be recorded? What sort of decisions do we get to make in an LSD? Why are my taxes different than my neighbors? How is it, land use planning is a huge issue that I get contacted about on a regular basis. Why is it that I can have a lobster pound that can go in next to me? I don't want industrial next to me. You know, I have a residence, it's a huge issue that we deal with. Another big issue that I get is, why don't I get to have a vote on what happens in the town of St. George? There's a lot of our businesses who their owners actually live outside of the municipality and they have a lot of questions about why they don't have a say about what actually happens in our town. And I don't know about you, but I think most of us don't necessarily identify with the LSD that we live in. We identify with our region. And when people ask me, now currently I live in the town of St. George, but I have moved many, many times since I've been married, but still when people ask me whether I lived in Brettlebane or whether I lived in Latang, because I have lived all over, and they ask me where I'm from, I tend to say, I'm from St. George. Because this is the area that I identify with, that people recognize. And so it begs the question, are we actually organized the way that makes the most sense? And so what the province of New Brunswick really wants to know is, what works for you? How can we improve? And what are you afraid of? Or at least those are the questions that I want to hear from. And this isn't my meeting tonight, so we're not going to answer those questions tonight. But I'm certainly open if you want to send me some messages. Because I think there are things that we can improve on. In my personal opinion, we are so much stronger when we work together. Because that's what we are, we are one big community. If you live in an LSD, if you live in Latang or if you live in Brettlebane, if you live in Masquerade, you know what, this is where your kids go to school, this is where you do your grocery shopping, and we are really one region. So how can we work better as a region? And those are the questions that the province wants to know, right? Is what can we do different? What can we do better? What are you afraid of? What I hear the most that people are afraid of, people are afraid of their taxes going up. I don't want my taxes to go up either. I'll be the first to say that. But I do think that we can do better. Oh, another question that I get on a regular basis is about recycling. People want to know about their garbage pickup. That's an RSC decision, right? So, so that's just another example. So anyway, if you're interested in those little issues and how we can do better, I know I certainly am, and you can feel free to contact me, but I encourage you to all take a look at the green paper because it'll give you a better idea of what it is that the, the government wants to hear about. And really, at this point in time, we just want to hear from you. Little more background on that, June 30th was actually the deadline to submit information to the province. I have talked to local government and they respect that you're past the June 30th deadline, but they'll certainly receive your information. They have already started drafting a what we heard, so that will be out in August with hopefully a white paper to follow, which will give you an idea based on the recommendations that we've heard from the people. So I do encourage you to speak up. I don't think I'm allowed to ask questions, but, or take questions, but I'll stick around afterwards.
Actually, if anybody wants to ask our MLA in question, I will allow it.
I have a question. I understand that the green paper, well, now we're, now we're making the transition to a white paper. I know it's available online. How can we make this paper more accessible so that people who don't have access to computers can read what it's about?
I've got all kinds of copies of it at my office. Some people have actually reached out to me and said they'd like copies. You can reach my office and I can print you a copy. I'm sure the town would probably be willing to do the same thing if you don't have access. So for example, I'm in Graham and Ann tomorrow, so you won't be able to reach me out to my office, but you can feel free to give me a call. I'll get you a copy. I know we've mailed them out to lots of people. I'm sure the town would be willing to do the exact same thing. So if you don't have access to a computer, then we can get you a hard copy.
Any questions that other members have? I just noticed in the previous, in the previous show of hands, that very large number of the audience today are coming from the LSDs. And at least the second part of our hearing pertains an initiative of St. George to, to do something in St. George that the people of St. George will be responsible to pay, either through funding, raising funds, or through their taxes. So I just want to actually make sure that, that that hearing hears from people and organizations who are operating in St. George and they have a direct interest in the St. George matters. So I would ask, I would ask the, the people who came out for the LSDs to actually try to, to, to give us a standing, to explain why, why they are here if they want to speak. to explain why they are here, if they want to speak about an application that St. George is considering filing. And I will move on to the second part of our hearing by actually asking any person who lives in St. George, who would like to speak on that matter, or any organization who operates in St. George, who likes to speak on the subject of the town of St. George filing an application to ACOA for what is proposed in the hearing. So, can I have a raise of hands, who you are from St. George, David?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, please. You want to get the standing because -- sorry.
Again, this is almost like a replay of 2012. This is almost like a replay of 2012. The issue in the 2012 municipal election was whether to build a museum and a theater down at the Day Adventure Center for over a million dollars. That's -- did not happen. That was the reason I ran for council at that time, because it was, to me, very similar to this proposal. You have to, it doesn't matter how much funding you get, you have to look at the long-term costs and the utilization of these projects. My opinion, ain't going to happen. We had a proposal to put a museum out here, and they were going to, a group was going to raise the money, plus the money for maintenance. Well, it never happened, because it was such a large amount of money, right? And this, again, this museum, theater, whatever it was at the Day Adventure Center, was a million-plus dollars. The town cannot afford to maintain these facilities, to staff them and maintain them. That's the big cost. The cost, when you get government sharing the cost, is not astronomical, but it's what it's going to cost down the road. It's like this building. This building's been nothing but a drain on the town, you know? It really has. I mean, I've worked on it, and I know what the costs have been, and we cannot afford these types of projects, in my opinion, you know? There's things we can afford, but you have to be very careful with the residents' funds. And it does affect the LSDs, because if you get governance reform, they're going to be paying part of this. Maybe not right this day, but in the future, they could be responsible for maintaining these facilities. And any facility we build is a shared facility. That's always been the discussion in St. George. It's not only for the residents, it's for the surrounding area. Yes, we identify with as being residents of St. George, you know, not Brettlebain. Or Bradalben. So, no, that's my only comments. This is a replay of 2012.
Can we stay for one minute because we may have some questions?
Yeah.
Let's start from Brendan. No?
Nope.
I have two questions for you, David.
I'd just like to stress one thing. Anything you do here, you have to look at the cost going forward. We have escalating costs, and you don't have, hopefully, you don't have a dramatic increase in your tax base, because people can't afford it, most people. And taxes, we know what's happening to real estate values. I don't see the council saying, "Oh, we're going to reduce the tax rate by 20% because the value of houses went up 20%." You're going to say, "Oh, look at the money I got in my pocket spent." That's my opinion. You know, I could be wrong. But you can't add another five or six or seven or eight hundred dollars onto people's taxes because the real estate values went up. Even if that makes it more affordable for these projects that you'd like to have. Always keep your eye on what it's going to cost down the road, not the initial cost.
David, I wanted to have two questions for you, if you can help. Are you familiar with another initiative, a regional initiative for an Eastern Charlotte Community Development Center, a hub? Are you familiar with it at all?
Where's that? Oh, the plan for here?
Yes.
That's been ongoing from 2015 or something like that. And I haven't followed it recently, but it's gone through all different facility, you know, what it encompasses, and no, I've talked to a few people, but I haven't really kept up with it.
My question to you as a resident of St. George is, would you be prepared to actually see a project that's going to cost 10 times more than a million dollars if that is shared by the whole region?
Well, that's the only way you could afford it.
Yes.
And I think a project like that would be useful. Personally, I don't think the libraries today are dying. I've got my library.
Okay.
You know, I'm sure most people do. I don't buy a book, I get it free online, you know, at my convenience.
Should the answer just summarize?
Yeah, no, no, I'm not anti, but it has to be, it has to be something that's viable for the town.
No, 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 I want to ask you just for the record, $1 million is too much for St. George to maintain. $10 million if it's shared with Eastern Charlotte, okay?
If it's St. George alone, it's too much money.
But if it's shared with Eastern Charlotte, $10 million, okay?
And if the residents of the LSD field, it's a viable project also. I mean, they have to buy into it. You can't, you know, I mean, they might not have a choice after this reform.
Yeah.
We've heard about reform for so many years, and it's always, you know, diggity-glosh to Le Pro or the county line, right? And, you know, how are they going to feel about having to support us when, if you're on that end, on the east end of the county, you might support everything in St. John's?
Okay.
You know, I don't know. It would have to be a project that is supported by the whole region.
Okay.
Or you'll end up where I think where St. Stephen is with their center.
Okay. I have a second question to ask you, because you mentioned about the library. We have a library in St. George, is in our town. I'm sure that you know about it, because you have been council for a while. Would you agree with the statement that the greatness of a community can be judged by how it treats its weakest members?
Certainly, but that still doesn't make a library a viable entity for this town.
No, no, I would like to actually hear your opinion about greatness of a community can be judged by how it treats its weakest members. Do you agree with that or not?
No, but I think financial reality is one of the things that governs what you do.
Okay.
Yeah. You'd like to treat the, you know, the lowest, whatever, economical, whatever, person the same, or give them the full services, but sometimes you can't do what you want. We can't afford it. We're not a rich community.
Thank you. Actually, do you have any questions? No?
We have another gentleman that wants to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors, Mr. Cadet, for this opportunity to address this issue. My name is Hal Mergerow. I'm a senior citizen, a resident of St. George, a former counselor, and a volunteer of the library, present library, which, contrary to something I read, is located on the second floor of the town hall. I'm not sure who gave the information about the library to The Telegraph, but somebody should have given them the correct information about the library.
The correct is, sir. And today's newspaper article.
Well, the initial.
Yeah, the initial was wrong, but it was corrected. I corrected it.
Thank you. I hadn't realized that.
I'm just letting you know.
The, my topic of discussion is the library and walking track. The Eastern Charlotte Community Development Plan, my question to council is, because in that plan, there are proposals for a walking track and a different version of a library. It would be an IT center, a learning center. My question to council is, have you discussed, I know the plan has been presented to you and that you've received the plan, but have you, as a council, discussed that plan? And have you considered that plan going forward? And where does that fall in terms of this adding to this building and the walking track and the proposed library? There's a larger issue there that I believe needs discussion, full disclosure. I was on one of the committees that, and that gave the report that is in, that the council, the committee I was on gave a report, and that would be in that report that you have. My concern is that there is a larger issue that's regional, and I believe that one of the elements of this council is to work regionally, and that the consideration of that report is, it's a regional, it's an Eastern Charlotte regional report for a proposal which addresses many issues, of which I'm not here to address those. But I'm asking the council if they have discussed this report, and where do they stand with that report? Because in my mind, that report needs to be considered when making the decision that you were talking about tonight. Thank you.
Any of the councilors have a question?
In regards to your comments about the report, I've read the report a couple of times. There are valid concerns there, and there are some very good points of which you have brought up that are on that report. Henceforth, I think we should just go in consultation with that group and to get their ideas, and go forward and look at the options.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate hearing that.
Could I just say, the mayor and myself met with the group, and we only, the two of us have actually had a copy of it till now. Sam's got one now, but we all now have a copy, and we intend to meet with the group and discuss it, because there's some wonderful ideas in here.
That's music to my ears. Thank you.
I have, excuse me, I have two questions for you. Hello? Just, I'm sorry, I just want to actually, I just want to clarify one thing. I have two questions to ask you. Have you ever been able to visit our library the last few years?
He volunteers.
I know that, have you volunteered, are you still volunteering there?
Yes, I frequently go to the St. Stephen Library, the St. John Regional Library, the Harvey Library in Harvey High School, Fredericton Regional Library. I guess I visit libraries, and they have changed in their nature.
Have you visited our St. George library recently? I just, I missed the point.
Have I visited?
Yes.
I volunteer.
So, you are volunteering there?
Yes, I work one day a month in the library.
Do you find that this library is difficult for people with physical disabilities to access? It's a very serious matter.
Yes, actually, it's the building itself, the municipal building, until I approached the previous council about being able to push a button to get in the front door, I couldn't do that. I have great difficulty getting up the stairs. We do need a new facility, but it needs to be attached to the regional system, and it also needs to be of a different nature. There's a, they're a whole, it's a learning center, it's not a library. Yes, there's lots of information, but there's programs, children's programs, there are many things that a library can do that this library isn't. The other thing that I feel that has been overlooked is the great work of the three ladies who have run that library on their shoulders and for the past decades, and I just, I feel that at this time, that's being overlooked. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your comments about how important libraries are. Thank you.
Council and Jason, good evening. My name's Laura Lee Carrier, and I'm the executive director for the Community Living Center, which is a training and support agency that's funded by the Department of Social Development and governed by our local Eastern Charlotte Association for Community Living. As a nonprofit organization, we advocate for the rights and freedoms of people with disabilities. Specifically, in our group, we support adults with disabilities to live, work, and have recreation within inclusive communities. We work here in town at 124 Main Street, and we've been here for some time. We support about 35 individuals who are from various areas throughout the whole Eastern Charlotte area. We even have some individuals that come from Deer Island and from St. Stephen. So, a great deal of the work that we've undertaken in the 37 years that we've been there is to develop opportunities in our communities so that everyone belongs and has fair access to an inclusive environment. I guess none of us really want to hear that money would be, ever be, you know, a barrier to that, because it's really important that, like you said, John, if you're meeting the needs of the most vulnerable people, then your community is a good place. So, we, that's what we work to, we try to make sure that there's fair access to an inclusive environment, and also that we build up inclusive attitudes and practices. That's the most important. Because everyone desires to belong, to be connected, and be valued for what they offer, we have to engage in diverse thinking in order to ensure our community is welcoming an accessible place for everyone. When I think of community, I think of every person and everything in my local area. I may not physically be from St. George, but St. George is the hub where we all, in Eastern Charlotte, work, shop, connect, go to school, with others, and so on. And I'm like Andrea, I connect with this region, but I often say I'm from St. George. People understand that, instead of from Penfield, or that's where I live, or Lakitopia, where I used to live. But, so, that's how we're perceived here, and that St. George is our hub. So, and I love my community, it's beautiful, it's diverse, it's a very unique rural area. And I do believe that we're one of the largest rural areas in Canada, and so, there's a lot of significance here. But my dream for my community has always been that it be welcoming and provide lots of things to do, opportunities and environments where people of all ages can connect and engage, where they can be valued and feel safe. And that has to include those who are living on the fringes in our community, those who are chronically marginalized by society. To me, the idea of a library, I think, is brilliant. For our participants, there are not many places to congregate or meet with other people besides the Community Living Center, so that makes us segregated. If only people that come there are disabled, then it's a segregated environment. It's a struggle to find places for individuals to go where they connect with other people, or for our children to have recreation, and I suspect that this may be the same for others. Accessibility is having a place to go and a means to enter it. It's fine to get there, but if you can't get in, then there's no inclusion going to happen. There can't be inclusion if people cannot get in, or they're not welcomed in, and there is a difference. With regard to a community library, in rural areas at least, I really think we're tending to perceive a library based on what we presently have. And so, it's my perception of a community library, and these are just some random thoughts I have, because most of my family live in cities, and they couldn't be without their local community library for their children, and these are some of the reasons. A community library is more like a community center where people can connect, and I can't say enough about the power of connection and partnerships, and how they lead to very positive outcomes for people. You know, a person's sitting in Tim Hortons, and they happen to be sitting with some other people, and they meet a local employer, and they get talking, and maybe it turns into a job. Those kind of little sparks never happen unless people get together in a common place. I just don't see that commonplace in St. George at this time. And certainly, modern libraries are far more than books. A community library can be a meeting place where people can connect in a safe, inclusive environment for a whole variety and range of services. Libraries can coordinate with local schools and many other groups to develop programs Libraries can coordinate with local schools and many other groups to develop programs for children, teens, parents, and adults. They can provide free tutoring and literacy programs. I find, being a nonprofit in Eastern Charlotte, that we, there's, I know at one time there was like 80 different nonprofit groups in our area, which is amazing, but we all work in our silos. So I see a library as a place where these groups could come together, or we can, you know, spark ideas and work more collaboratively on different ideas and plans, be a pivotal point for a lot of things in our community. Another benefit is users of modern libraries can use eBooks, because, yeah, most of us probably aren't reading books anymore, and eBooks are popular in our, in our technology age. There's also great opportunities for interactive learning for children. I was thinking too about digitizing services where people can go just to print photos or photo booths and just places where, because I think Costco doesn't even have that service anymore, so I don't think there's anywhere where you can go and print a photo you don't have to drive to, so those are simple things. And of course, access to the internet. Many people in rural areas still do not have internet or computers. So it also offers free databases and a place to do research. And research does show that children who access libraries will be much more likely to grow into teens and not adults who will continue to value them. It instills reading habits at a very early age. They offer quiet places for students to study. They can offer a variety of free events and cultural events, and the place where we can meet our neighbors in a diverse, in a diverse cultural population, which we have a rich one here. But how many of us really know a lot of, of the people that, I know on my road, I think almost every house now is, there's, you know, someone from another culture, a Filipino family, Romanian family, you know, I never, we never have any place to meet them. They seem like really interesting people. We meet them at local multicultural markets once a year, but I would like to get to know my neighbors, and I don't know where you would go to do that. A library seems like a nice place that can meet a lot of different people. And again, like just programs and classes for parents and newcomers. Libraries also provide employment. Community libraries are highly sought facilities for people considering to move to, to an area for their children. I know from, like I said, my families that live in cities, you know, my nieces and nephews go to the library four or five times a week, and they do something different every time they go there. It's the most, you know, exciting outing of their week. They're not going there just to pick out a book, they're going for some program or some fun thing that's, that's happening that's also educational. And add a coffee bar with a Starbucks feel, and I guarantee it'll attract young people, and we know we need to have places for our young people to go. I know my son, growing up, if he wasn't in hockey and we weren't traveling all the time, I don't know what else he would have done in this area, other than like the sports, like there's tons of things to do with sports, but really not a lot of places to go or to hang out. So I just believe that in everything we create and build, we have to have the foresight to build it, and to build it, you know, according to an accessibility plan. And we need to consult with groups, and, you know, just to mention, one little group that we support is called People First, and they're a group of self-advocates, and they're the ones that came up with a plan to put a Mobi Pad in at Canal Beach, and they had an advisor, Brooke Barker, who brought that idea to them. They were so in love with that idea, they just dared to dream, and they raised money all summer and got a grant, and they made it happen. Now, the next thing they did after the pandemic was called up Jason and wanted to know what more, what's needed now. And Jason explained that in the plan to reface and restructure Canal Beach, that now there would be an accessibility plan built in in every, so I kind of credit them for getting that thought rolling, that, you know, in every, in every step of the way, that accessibility will be built, be built into that beach. So now they're waiting to see when it gets done, if they can buy, they can do some funding to get some watercraft for people in wheelchairs. And I did have a young man who was going to come with me today, his name's Gordon, and he's recently moved to St. George, and he was, he was at camp for the last couple of weeks, so he wasn't able to come tonight, but he is a great person to consult with. He's in a wheelchair, and I believe he had plans or may have, when, John, when you were canvassing for mayor, he wanted to call you up and take a walk with you down the street so he could see that, you know, he had a nice, expensive, motorized wheelchair, but he couldn't get up the street because the cracks were holding him back. So accessibility is an important thing. So you'll never really get the full perspective of accessibility issues until you see things from the perspective of a person who experiences lack of accessibility. So anyway, without taking up too much more time, my takeaway is always just to dare to dream. I believe that, I know money will get in the way, nobody understands lack of funding and money more than nonprofits, but we still just dare to dream, and if enough people can buy into that and work together, it'll happen, and it'll get paid for. I always believe that dreams should never be first about the ability to do it, but the vision of how it would look if it were already accomplished. So that's my only takeaway. I think it's a wonderful idea, and would definitely benefit the people I work with, and so if it benefits them, it's going to benefit everyone, so thank you for your time.
I, anybody has a question, Laura Lee? I just want to actually have a comment, that I had the opportunity to actually meet for first time last week when I visited the community features, and I was, I was taken aback by the energy in that community. And if we fail to actually recognize them as, some people suggested that we should make a poll, and I said, you know, we have very few people with wheelchairs around, so they will lose, but we have an obligation to look after these weak people. Thank you, that's my point. It's not a popularity contest, it's a duty, that's my point. I, I want to go to the next one. David, you have a presentation to make?
I have comments.
No, no, a comment, on what?
On your library.
On the library, yeah, that's the time, yes, yes.
Well, I was here the other night when you made your presentation regarding the library, walking trail, multipurpose space for craft area, and also a coffee shop. So I figured that would probably be somewhere in the vicinity of 10,000 to 15,000 square feet. And you had mentioned that a cost of about $1 million to build that. Now, I've been building houses, I've been building buildings for 50 years, and I'll tell you one thing, you are not going to get a $15,000 building to meet fire code and public occupation for under $225 a square foot. There ain't no way, guaranteed. Now, you mentioned that you, the purpose of this was you were asking for the residents of St. George to provide $1,000 for you to fill out an application to send to Ottawa to get funding for this Canada Community Revitalization Fund. Now, you do have a COA on here, I don't think the COA has anything to do with that fund. Do they, Jason?
It's called the Canada Community Revitalization Fund.
It's not a COA fund.
It's not a COA fund.
It's not a COA fund.
One of their streams, coming from one of their streams from a COA.
Okay. I went online to, to look at some of the criteria, and believe me, if you're sending an application to Ottawa, and you're looking for $1 million, you better have your ducks in a row. You better know the size of the building, the design of the building, the cost of the building, and you better have all your research done. And I don't think none of that is done yet. As far as a library goes, I would love to have a library, but I also would like to have safe streets to walk on, to get, to stop some of the speeding traffic here and the four-wheelers. I'd also like, love to see some affordable housing for people coming in. There's all kinds of things I need, that we all need in this, in this area, and we have to put them in line, but you are not ready to make an application to Ottawa for this building. You're not, you know, you don't have the design, and if you think that, you mentioned last week about paying someone $1,000 to fill out the application, do the design, the whole thing, if you think, if you find an engineer who is not working to do a complete viability study and design on this building for $1,000, you don't want him, believe me, he's not working for a reason. So, and as far as taking the ball field out there, to stretch this building out, no way. I will do everything in my power to prevent that from happening, because my dad was a veteran, and the veterans gave that field to the town of St. George for a ball field. Now, if you want to build a library somewhere else, fine, but not out there. And you think you can move it a couple hundred feet over, there ain't nothing left to it. There won't be a ball field there. So going out that way is just, doesn't even make sense. So anyways, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, David, thank you. Any question that, to pass to David? Thank you. We have one more, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm new to town, within the last few weeks, my name's Brad Crick, and just have a couple, probably more questions about this, as I'm trying to catch up really quickly as much as I can. First, one thing quickly, when my son saw that baseball field, that was the most excited thing he was for this whole town, just about, just so you know, and we're new here. Couple of quick questions, what was the target demographic for this project?
The target demographic for this project?
Yeah.
I guess as a, as a person who initiated the issue, I had my primary target, the people who cannot access the current library right now.
Okay.
I have also another group of youth who do not have access to the internet, and they are congregating outside this building in cars, and they browse the web by accessing the wifi from this building, and then they throw some garbage out, and all the town complains that our youth is reckless.
Okay.
So that's another, another, another group. The other group is the seniors, and another group within the seniors who called seniors who don't like to have the label seniors, people who like to go to a library to read a newspaper, to actually meet another senior who doesn't want to be called senior and have a discussion about politics. And there is the classical, we have 16 volunteers who right now go there, so I'm sure they have friends who would have liked to go there. So in general, I think as a general community center, not targeted to a specific one, but I have a particular attention to the people who cannot be here today, the people who are disabled, physically disabled.
Okay.
Okay, so this, this is my target group, yeah.
Yeah, and my second question, you referenced the vulnerable people earlier, what would the vulnerable people of this town typically be, just to try and, I'm trying to catch up, sorry. Like, like a town, a town is its best when it can help those that are the most vulnerable, is really roughly what you had said? So who are those most vulnerable people?
You are asking, who are the most vulnerable people in this, in this, in this?
So you've referenced that.
I think, I think if you look at the application of our COA, speaks specifically about the non-represented people, and some of them, they are the people with mobility issues.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. What would the annual estimated ongoing cost of the facility be?
The whole idea is to actually make that, that running cost of a facility like that to be a, a small portion of the existing facility here. So the, the concept that I have tried to flesh out would have been one that would utilize the same entrance as this, this, this building, the washrooms for this building, which will have washrooms accessible to the, to the, to the public. And I also suggested that for that incremental cost, we may consider renting out a small coffee booth, which will, should be able to absorb the incremental cost, not the cost for this building, because that exists, and it's already in our books. But if we have, if we have to actually pay for an extra, say, a few thousand dollars for, for power, for the funds, to actually ventilate the, the walking track, and since you mentioned it, there was a suggestion that a walking track should be a building. I was, my concept was a long greenhouse, that's going to be, no need for heating, just ventilation if it overheats by the sun. So I, I would expect that the actual power bill for a building like that would be a few thousand dollars, and the cost of actually supporting it would not be additional, because we have always someone to clean up the toilets here, so it would be the same toilets. So that's my, my estimate.
That's good. Jen, my final comment is, I'm not opposed to libraries at all, but where I was from, we were in a city of 80,000 people, and the library had become much more about the programs it was running than the books in the building. So that would be my only thing, is that, you know, the lib, current libraries are very much more about the programs that they're offering than necessarily the actual books. Yeah. Thank you.
Welcome to St. George.
Thank you.
We need new people like you. Any questions for him, please?
No.
No.
Any other person from St. George? Go ahead, please.
My name's Mary Ann Craig. I am the chairperson of the committee on the board of the library. There are currently 16 volunteers that faithfully show up and help with the running of the library. We know that we are in a very poor position to be on the second floor, and we have asked at different times that we could be moved. I'm thinking back to between 12 and 15 years ago, when the three ladies that are the most involved with the library went to the regional board. So I'm questioning whether this group has contacted the regional library board. They have certain requirements that we could not meet for $1 million 15 years ago. And it require all these, the LSDs, the village, and the town to take part.
Can I address now, or you want me to address later, after you complete?
You can answer, Ms.
Yeah. I fully agree with you that a library of provincial standards that can be taken over by the provincial library system requires much more money than what we are budgeting for this project if we proceed. The point that I'm trying to, to, to pursue with this application is not to build a library to the provincial standards, I'm trying to build a stopgap measure of a library that we can transfer our books and have a few more tables around for people to sit around and read a newspaper. So the, the goal of having a library that's going to be a much more full in terms of compliance with the provincial, potentially be taken over by the province, is not part of the scope of this one, is a stopgap measure until other things happen. So that, that, that's my answer to you.
Well, personally, I couldn't agree with spending $1 million for a stopgap. We need to think of a regional library.
Thank you, thank you.
And also, I think as chairperson, and our idea is that we would like to hear more about the hub. We have been in some contact with them, and we feel that is the way that we likely would like to go. Thank you very much for your interest.
Thank you. Ms. Craig, can I ask you one question?
Sir?
Do you know if, if the proposed hub intends to have a, a library that will meet the provincial standards?
I cannot answer that yet.
Oh, you cannot answer that yet. So, and do you know, do you know if, if that community's, that, that library within the hub, if it is not to provincial standards, would, would it be a stopgap, or it would be something that would fulfill your, your, your interests?
I can't answer that, I am not on that committee.
Thank you.
And I was not asked about anything that you have said either.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Rick Mason, and I'm a resident of St. George. My comment is, I'm not even really here to debate a library or not, I thought it was when I first came, but I look at it with no plan and no I thought it was when I first came, but I look at with no plan and no details. I'm not prepared to make a decision on anything really like for spending money. I know with my own job, I know of any type of project, we have to have engineers and you don't always get the first engineer, the firm that can take it, that can do the work. And then you have to find contractors and that sort of thing. So to me, like I'm in absolutely no position to say yes or no to any type of project here until I actually see some numbers on paper. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other person from St. George who like to speak? Yes, go ahead, please.
I've just been listening to everybody's comments. Can you hear? And also Sally Duncan. And it just seems to me you're not looking for a library at all, that you're looking for a community center. And I'm just wondering, isn't that what this was meant to be? The McAdavic Center? So, okay.
No, just a minute. Anybody wants to actually answer this question?
I didn't hear what you said.
The, the question is, we are talking about the library and, 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 and walking track and the, the. She asked, is that, is that a community center? And I, I mean, if you want to hear the answer?
She asked if this place was not a community center. Is this not what this place is?
Yes, she asked, she asked if that is a community. Yeah. Yes, this is a community center that does not include a library and not a walking track. So the proposal is to make an application that will allow this community center to expand and include a library and a walking track. That is the, the concept of the application that, that has been put forward as a suggestion to proceed. So does that answer?
I can't say I'm a big agreement with a walking track either.
Okay, yes.
For various reasons, but I'm, I guess my point was we're not actually using this as a community center.
So you are suggesting that we should convert it to a library and?
No, I'm, I'm not even talking about a library. I don't think, I think a library and a community center are two different things.
They don't go together?
Not really. Not if that's what you want. I think we have maybe the idea of, there's lots of books around, there's lots of books in the library. I think we should have an area where people can bring books and take books. I don't think there has to be anything official if you just want books, okay? And the community center is something different if you want a hub for people to get together and stuff. We've got this room, we've got downstairs, we've got a kitchen. I don't know how much we're allowed to use this center currently without having to rent it out. So that's what I'm saying. Maybe we should look at what we've got and come up, I mean, all these ideas you have for the library, they're all going to cost if you want somebody to come in, make plans and arrange programs for kids and whatever. So it's not just, but if you just want to have a place for books, why don't we do that? I don't know. Just a silly idea, I suppose, but.
No, no, that's why we have a hearing, actually hear from the residents, how they think that we should proceed, how they think that we can utilize the best our resources, whether it's tax, tax money or existing facilities. That's a very useful comment. And we have, we have counselors who are working exactly on how to improve this, this area.
And something that's never discussed when it comes to the, is what about a carbon footprint? Can we not look at what facilities we have and open them up such as the schools, which is a sticky point, instead of trying to build new things all the time? Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it. Any other person from St. George?
Hi, my name's Lyndi Sullivan Kotef. I do live in the town of St. George now. I'm currently building a new home and residing renting in St. George. I guess my comments concerned kind of go along with David as far as, to begin with, you have to have your ducks in a row. You have to have costs going forward, current costs of what is cost to build. I work at Home Hardware, I've worked there for 24 years and I am currently building a new home and there is no way that you would be able to feasibly build a structure with everything that you would need for a million dollars. I guess my other concern would be you're going into applying for money without really a concrete plan set forth, whether it be the cost of the building, the ongoing sustainability of it, nor do I feel that you're looking at, you're talking about the most vulnerable and the most whatever, you're not looking at the areas of everybody involved. The hub that they've talked about is going to be inclusive to everybody, whether it be the community living center, there'll be opportunity there for them. I know they've spoken to the Filipino community and the multicultural organizations about being able to host things out of there, whether it be the YMCA. There'll be recreation facilities, so walking tracks that can help with the elderly as well as people taking their children for activities or whatever, as well as teenagers. The schools currently, most times do not have enough gym space to host the programs and facilitate as many kids that want to play sports, whether it's volleyball, basketball, getting into the schools for most of these programs. You have a hard time getting gym time because if you look at our high school from grade six to grade 12, there is one gym. And you look at, you have several categories and groups of kids trying to play sports out of there, whether it be basketball. So there may be an opportunity for that in this. You mentioned about the kids congregating outside and teenagers, my teenagers would be one of them. I'm sure. I, I wouldn't say that she's throwing garbage because if you looked in her car, it's all in there. But what I am saying is what is proposed here, these kids aren't going to come into a library with a few extra tables. These kids need somewhere to go for recreation. They hang out there because there's nowhere else to meet their friends and hang out. So to me, a library or a walking track for the elderly is not helping that group of kids. It's not helping the disabled kids or people with disabilities. You know, you're, you're honing in on a couple little groups when St. George has a bigger diverse group that there's opportunity for. So working with the other group that has already got into place something that is helping everybody or looking at maybe a different idea once you have concrete plans to go forward with that kind of includes everybody, being teenagers. I mean, I've got six kids at home from the ages of 10 to 20. So, you know, personally from what is being proposed here for extra money out of my pocket, I would like to see it help somebody even in my own home and none of, but what's being proposed is anything that anybody in my home would use. That's my only comments and concerns. I'm all for trying to grow St. George, trying to bring more opportunity and items, things for people to do because that's important for bringing people to our community. But I think you need to sit and have big discussions, not just jump forth into the first, oh, hey, this is a good idea, let's run with it. You know, you have to sit down and talk. It takes time.
Are you familiar with the work of the Eastern Charlotte community?
I, I know of it, yes.
Okay. Do you think that proposing, say, 10,000 feet house for people to walk in the winter and a little room addition here to actually have a library would actually in any ways impede the greater regional plan for a much more complex facility?
Not necessarily. I'm thinking what they're doing is also including the same things that you're saying.
Correct.
So what's the sense of doubling up on the same thing and spending a million dollars on something that's already going to take place?
So would it be possible that the group that is here who's still planning and, and, considering and reviewing, would it be possible that they may actually have to drop a walking track because there's going to be a walking track here already for, for, for $100,000?
But why would we do that when what they're doing is going to be able to facilitate the whole thing at once? It's not going to be extra cost because it's going to be kind of combined into one.
How about if next year, for example, 10 people less, they're going to break a hip because they're going to have a place to walk? How about that as a potential benefit of doing something now?
I don't think that your plan is going to be within the next year anyway. The splash pad, awesome. Congrats. But look how long it's taken. Stuff takes time. Getting a plan together takes time. Building a house, I'm building a 30 by 38 house, trust me, it takes time to line up contractors and to get the right contractors, the right engineers, the right, you know, nothing lines up properly. It doesn't happen overnight. It's not going to happen in a year. You're not going to see this. This group has been working for at least six years getting their ducks in a row.
Six years, yes.
At least.
At least, yes.
You know, it takes time and I'm not, I'm not downing anything that you're trying to do. I'm just saying it has to be done in the right methods and for the right reasons and the right situations for it to be done. It's not something that you can just jump in and say, oh, hey, let's get this money and build this when you haven't even looked properly into all of the ins and outs of it. Like I said, that group per se, I mean, they've been spent six years on different studies and meeting different communities and people at different levels through the YMCA's and other people in towns that have, have similar structures to make sure, you know, all the ins and outs of, of what they need and, and what's best for us. So it's, it's just something that I think needs more planning and maybe a different approach as to what the money would be used for. I personally don't think what you're asking for the money to be used for is something necessarily that we need extra here. If it's already something taking place, maybe something else could be brought forth and thought of and applied for maybe at a different time.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions?
So first, hello to Mr. Mayor and the Council and Jason, thank you very much and Chris as well. I'm Joan Matrowski. I'm the executive director of the Multicultural Association of Charlotte County. We have a large group of people coming in, a lot with children, a lot bringing in their families. We have people coming in from other countries as well as from other areas and at the moment we have a lot of people looking for places to live, looking for transportation. We're looking at population growth of the area. I host international students and so I'm constantly looking for something for our teens to do in the area that is safe and that is a major concern and we're always looking for something that is completely inclusive. I am in great support of a library, of a community center, of a fitness center, a true community area that can be accessed regionally and can have job growth. We do need a space for children, teens, adults with various mobility issues, whether they be illness, injury or age. We need someone to run the area so it's accessible during traditional work hours, hours as well as non-traditional work hours. We need to look at why young professionals are choosing to live in St. John as opposed to, and commute to their jobs as opposed to living into our community. And these issues are beyond housing and transportation. Looking for what we're here for today is the ACOA application and whether or not we're ready to submit it. I echo the concerns that the town is not ready to submit the application. I've looked at the application itself and the requirements to go forward. It specifically asks for plans, who our funding partners are, how many jobs will be monitored or mentioned, maintained, sorry, how many jobs will be created? And if the town can't provide that strategic planning here and now with this group, I have concerns that it can be provided in five days' time. I have concerns that it can be provided in five days' time because that's the application deadline is July 23rd. So I am in support of something all-inclusive. I agree with a community center, a library, a fitness center, a multicultural center, definitely a multicultural center, that is my job. But I just don't think at this moment in time that the town is ready to submit an application. Thank you.
Can I have your questions? You think that this region, this community ought to pay for a multicultural center in that new hub?
I don't think that's a decision of mine. My organization is funded by the government.
You mentioned that that new project that's proposed may include something that pertains to this function.
I would love to see a community center include a multicultural aspect, yes, because a lot of our citizens are multicultural.
So essentially, if, if we add this thing into the services that the community offers, is something that the community should be able to support?
As a whole, yes, the community should be able to support and regionally as well, yeah.
So as a whole, you know, St. George and LSDs and Black Harbor to support it?
Possibly. I'm not in the position to give that recommendation.
No, I'm asking you because you suggested this new library versus hub.
No, no, I did not. I set up in support of library, community center, fitness center, hub, whatever it may entail.
Okay.
I'm not choosing between one idea or the other. I'm saying this area needs something like that.
Okay. Have you ever made any application to ACOA?
I've made several funding applications.
Is there a process after you make the application that allows you to answer questions?
Of course. But we're, we're talking right now about whether or not this town is able to submit this application and in my opinion, we're not able to, if this information can't be given to this group of individuals who are very concerned about our town, otherwise they wouldn't be here, if that information can't be provided to this group, I have a great hesitancy that it can be in five days' time.
So let me ask you this question. The ACOA application also specifies that intake of applications will happen after this application.
Should there be additional funding available? Yes.
Correct. It says they will continue receiving applications after the deadline. So do you have any concern if we file that application after the deadline if ACOA is willing to accept it?
That's not the purpose of today's meeting and should that opportunity arise, I'd be more than happy to come back and see what the town has and is ready to present and then offer my opinion at that time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We did not give them five minutes before, so. Can you identify yourself, please?
My name is Laftakrasanaki and I live in St. George. And it seems that the people who oppose for the town of St. George to even apply, to even apply for a federal assistance to build an accessible library for our seniors and for our people with physical disabilities are the same people who have been involved in a feasibility study since 2019 to build a super center in Eastern Charlotte County. The studies of that super center have already costing thousands of dollars in feasibility studies to us taxpayers. We are still in phase two and we, the taxpayers, we have no idea how many more phases will follow until they put a shovel in the ground. The rumor, the rumor is that the super center will cost about $12 billion. Ooh, that's a lot of money. We have to ask ourselves why we are posing to $250,000, which will improve a little bit, a little bit, the lives of our seniors and our disabled. Is it because we don't care? Or is it because of other vested interests? Time will tell. What I suggest is let's put aside our egos, our political views and let's work together to improve the lives of our seniors and disabled people. We all are going to win. Thank you.
Very much. I just wanted to correct the record. We are on phase four now, not phase two. That's an important distinction. Any question for the last, the last presenter? Thank you. Archie?
Good evening, worship, council and citizens of St. George. I have a couple of questions. Does the town have any properties or anything that they can use at this time? Do we not have like a, a separate entity, like a different building or anything that can be used as a library at this time? Besides building onto this structure here?
Jason can answer this question. He's our CEO. He's our CEO.
Do we have any other space? No, no, no other place with the library at this time, no.
Okay. Did we not, uh, do we have a rental in the, in the mall?
For the medical center, yeah.
Is it being used as a medical center?
Yes.
It is?
Doctor need, yes.
Okay. Is there anything, do we have any properties that can be built on within the town itself?
We do have developmental properties, yes.
Could it be more accessible than adding on to here?
Uh, it'd be a new build, so, you know, clearing of, of land would have to be done.
Another thing is to, who owns the property, these, these, that this building sits on to and that ball field?
The town.
Are you sure? Because I know that the Legion had quite a, has quite a little bit to say about, they donate the land for the ball field.
Yeah, we, we do. We pay taxes, town of St. George.
Is it, is it deeded to the town of St. George?
Yes.
Yes, it is. So you take a piece of the town's history, the veterans' field, a section of it, of people who sacrificed their time and their lives to take it, their name off it and put a, and put a building onto it? Do you think that is right? I speak as a reason. I am the father of a veteran who served this country. I have many in my family who have served this country in many war, in all the wars. So I would not like to see anything done to that field. I agree with David. We honor the ones who have gone. You look like you want to destroy something that honored the people who have gone before us and who are coming behind us. Please do not do it. You will find opposition. Thank you.
Thank you, Archie. I just want to, to just clarify that we don't want to destroy, we want to build. And, uh, any other, any other presentation? Alice, you have any, any, any questions for Archie? No? Um, any other person who likes to, to present to this, to this, um, hearing? Well, that's, uh, oh, we have one more? Okay. Yes, go ahead, please.
If you're going to let somebody speak, there's not probably a choice.
Actually, the, 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 the last, the last, the last, the second part of our hearing was intended primarily for the residents who will actually have to pay for it. So unless you are paying for it, uh, I will not, I will, I feel that it, the, the, that's not the scope of our hearing for this one. For the other one, yes, it was. But for this one is for people who will actually have to put their...
Uh, I'd like to make a motion, Your Worship, not to submit the application to ACOA due to the fact that we don't have enough information and we are not shovel-ready.
I second that motion.
I, 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 I need some help here. Um, it's out of the agenda, uh, gentlemen. It's out of the agenda. So I will, I will, I will not accept it.
This is a meeting of the council.
This is a meeting of the council and we are allowed to, to change the council thing now?
There can be.
Okay. Um, then I want to make another motion too. Go ahead, please.
You better finish out that motion, Your Worship.
Yeah. So I have a seconded. I want to speak, I have questions about it.
We've already...
Am I, I guess, I, I can, I can, it was seconded?
Yeah.
Oh, seconded, yes.
Yeah. Questions?
I'm just wondering, is my late...
Sorry. Just a motion for...
I'd like to make Mary a something?
Absolutely.
May? It's not really, um, it's not really, um, a question. I just want to take my time to reasonably question the state of affairs when I'm simply, uh, just to preface, as I wrote this beforehand, um, we had this, this, we had this discussion, this presented on Monday, and a lot of things have happened since then. So I took the time to write something and I'd like to share it with everyone. I just want to take my time to reasonably question the state of affairs when I'm simply advocating for accessible multi-use space for a town using a federal grant. I've been called every name imaginable due to my desire to have a space that is ours, that is in St. George, to benefit our community. We've heard so much vocal concern against the idea of having a space that would be designed for the actual community. Why? I've listened to people from St. John to here who've choose to attack me personally instead of offering one piece of constructive criticism or any alternative suggestion to help our town. I've heard that we should look into mental health facilities from the same group of people that have simultaneously said that, and I quote, "I don't have the mental capacity to be on council." If you don't like the library idea, that's fine. It's not up to me. It's just my suggestion because I'm trying to look into opportunities such as these grants that have perhaps been overlooked in previous years. I'm being proactive. I don't expect everyone to agree with everything I say, but I certainly wasn't expecting people to go on an endless campaign of social media harassment. I don't want to mince words. We are a small community that makes itself even smaller by choosing to fight over things that haven't even come to vote yet. This is not a vanity project. This isn't about me. This is about us. And I am genuinely shocked by the middle school nature of choosing to name call instead of looking at the big picture of doing something for a town we're supposed to have pride in.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, I want to speak about the motion on the floor, which is, um, essentially to introduce a new item in the agenda without even having the opportunity to discuss the input for or against the application and immediately move to actually kill it now. It speaks for the kind of opposition that we had for this proposal, uh, by the dedicated people who proposed an alternative view of development. My view is that we have heard, uh, from many people today who opposed it, we were heard from people who actually, um, have, have supported it. Uh, there are many other people who are actually send messages and because they cannot come and they wanted to actually, uh, they send written, written submissions, which I have not presented to the council yet, uh, which are equally valid and they could have easily put into, um, uh, the, the discussion and the proceedings of the council to consider. However, the people who actually oppose the application are feeling the need to actually kill it now. I'm, I'm equally alarmed, I'm equally alarmed by what Counselor DeToreck said about how, how the people who oppose this are prepared to actually kill it. And, um, I, I will put the motion to the, I will put the motion to, um, to actually, to the, to the table to, to actually vote on it. I don't have anything else to say. So, uh, can you repeat your motion, Counselor Allison?
Okay. I made the motion to not submit the application to ACOA due to the fact that we don't have enough information and we are not shovel-ready. And I feel that if we put the application in through ACOA asking for this grant, that we're not, we don't have enough preparation to have the government look at it as a viable option. We're, we're going to look silly putting in an application to ACOA without the blueprints, a business plan, the finance, how much it's going to cost us after the building has been erected. Say, say if we got the grant, we can't tell these people out here how much it's going to cost, uh, the, the residents of St. George or the hub as a whole. Uh, how are we going to staff it? Uh, how, how many people are going to volunteer? How are we going to pay for it? Is our taxes going to go up? We as a council have to be cognizant of what it's costing the residents of St. George and I don't think we have enough information at this time to go ahead with any plan. Uh, I'm not against a library, don't get me wrong. I'm not against a walking track. I believe that things, seniors, I'm a senior, I don't like to admit it, but I'm a senior and I can't go out and walk in the wintertime. But what I'm saying is this application, I understand where you're coming from, Your Worship, but we need more information and we're, don't have the proper plans to look like we know what we're doing when we put in an ACOA application. Give us some time. Let us get together. Let us look at blueprints. Let us hire a, a proper contractor or engineer, someone that can say, uh, you can do this, you can do that. And again, too, we can't go near that ball field. I will stand here and fight you to the death on that one. I'm sorry. That's just my opinion and you know how bad I can be because I've already taken you to task a couple of times.
I have one question for the motion.
The motion on the floor is...
Yeah, the motion, I'm, I'm saying, the, the motion, um...
Is there a question from council?
Yeah, I had, I had a question for the, for the, for, for you, Counselor.
Okay.
Is the, the motion to actually not make, like, we, we, we...
The motion is not to make the application at this time?
The motion was to actually make an application now, so we can make it at a later time?
That's entirely up to you, but right...
No, not me, it's up to the council. But we don't kill it for, for this reason. We just say we will not submit an application now.
My motion is not to submit an application to ACOA due to the fact that we don't have enough information and we are not shovel-ready.
I second that motion.
Okay. So then, then let's say, let's put it to, to, to vote. Counselor Allison?
Nay.
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 Yay.
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 And what am I supposed to say?
That's a good question. What am I supposed to say?
All in favor is yay, right?
I guess the question, Your Honor, should just, it would be, who is in support of the current motion that's on the floor right now? So you would signal...
Which is not to make the...
Yeah, so the, the motion is, is not to make the application. So we'd be looking for council members to either support that motion with a yay or to oppose the motion with a nay. Okay, so...
So we're all, I'm sorry, so I'm in the way of...
So, your motion is not very clear, Counselor. You're not very clear.
On the day, I'm against, we support the motion.
So, yeah, so let's, 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 just for clarity, can you please repeat the, the motion?
The motion is not to submit the application to ACOA at this time.
Yay.
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 Nay.
The motion has been carried. I, I want to actually, unless, unless there is any other business you want to introduce today, Counselor?
No.
Okay. Uh, I want to actually thank everybody who came today. This council has been, like previous councils, very open to get the input from the public and that's why we're all here today. Uh, there would be more hearings in the, about important things like the Adventure Center, which everybody talks about. So I, I welcome you to come back and, um, thank you for coming up tonight. Thank you. And, uh, do I need a motion to actually close the meeting?
Motion to?
Yeah.
I second it.
Good afternoon.